Irish.
All right, so we'll go to the. All right, so we'll start the meeting. This is the Historic Preservation Board meeting, regular meeting on Monday, August 19th, 2024. We have three agendas, four agendas on the item tonight. Do we have a motion to open the meeting?
I'm going to open the meeting.
Second motion.
I got member Torres for second. Member Dubraski?
Aye.
Member Torres?
Aye.
Member Lannahan?
Aye.
Member Zara?
Yes.
Jared Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, before we start, does anyone have any need to recuse themselves from any items on the agenda?
No.
No.
Okay. So we, let's go ahead and start with item agenda number four. Is that what we decided on, just to start with that? Or should we?
The canal side properties, I'm not.
Right.
Right.
Okay.
So then do you immediately recuse yourself from that one?
No, I can sit here and listen. There's no reason why I can't listen, but I am not.
Okay. Okay, perfect.
I'm allowed to vote.
So we figured we would start with the Pittsburgh Canal Side Properties and then work our way down from there. So you guys go first, yeah.
I could have been late.
Well, folks, I'm Chris Nattler, as you, most of you know. It's nice to see you again.
Yep.
Thank you for taking your time. We're here today for the renewal of our certificate of appropriateness on the agenda here and improvement of approval by this board of the proposed settlement agreement that has worked, been worked out by the Village of Pittsford's attorneys and Pittsburgh Canal Side Properties. As you know, we met last in front of you last spring when we had some tweaks to the windows that had varied from what we originally, they were originally proven the certificate of appropriateness. This board endorsed that change and then we worked through the process and were eligible for a building permit. There's a dispute over the amount of fees for that. I think we're in a place where that has been resolved and what we're here asking is for you to endorse the proposed settlement agreement and authorize your chair to sign it. And so I'm here at Jeff's request to answer any questions you want to add.
Okay, so I'll start. My question for, for you representing PCP, Pittsburgh Canal Side Properties, what changes have you guys made to the building plans since the Historic Preservation Board issued the C of A in two, in 2023?
Since the last time you saw it, we've made absolutely zero changes.
Okay.
Which was when you were reviewing the changes.
Correct, so we issued the C of A in, let's get the dates right, and then we've met again in the spring of 2020, spring of 2023, you met.
Correct.
Okay, and that's when your C of A was issued?
Okay.
Okay, so since then?
No changes.
Absolutely nothing?
None.
Okay, so my second question is for Steve, building inspector. Have you reviewed them since that, that C of A was issued and have you, you can sign off that no changes have been made?
I did not do the review on this project.
Okay.
That would be a negative.
Okay.
Barrel Architecture has reviewed them, Burman Architects and engineers have reviewed them and the settlement is predicated on them being exactly the same as you.
Okay.
And any significant changes would require coming back before.
Any changes?
No, any significant changes.
Okay. So have any changes been made at all?
No.
Okay.
Zero changes have been made.
Okay, good. So not only no changes, but also in your verbiage, no significant changes?
No changes and no significant changes.
Thank you.
Swear I'm not trying to play.
No, I understand.
I want to be clear, I don't want to be misleading.
And we want to be clear too.
Yeah.
Because this is an important one.
Yeah.
Okay, so. Okay, anybody else have any questions on this?
No, I guess I'm a little stumbled on the word significant because it's, who decides what's significant? So I, I heard you say there's no changes and I guess there's not a plan to make any changes after this.
There is no plan to make any changes. We'll be submitting plans, this is the second that we've submitted plans for buildings one, two, and three. Building four, five, and six are such a mirror image of buildings one, two, and three, so those will be as presented in accordance with this agreement. That was, that was granted in spring last year.
Okay.
So you're asking for a C of A for the exact same thing?
Yes.
That you did apply. Okay.
Reissue.
Okay, so having stated that publicly, then I'll make a motion to reissue the C of A and the verbiage that we're going to use is for 12 months, starting on the date in which all parties sign the settlement agreement.
Okay.
Okay.
Great.
One second.
Member Dubraski?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Lannahan?
Yes.
Is member Zara abstaining or no vote?
I'm a, I'm a no vote.
Yeah, she abstained, well, she's abstaining because she can vote.
Now, member Zara, just for record, no vote?
No vote.
And Jared Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay. Now that that's been taken care of, the next step in this process, Jeff, and correct me if I'm wrong, is a motion to have the board approve the chair's signature on the settlement agreement?
Right.
Okay. Then my question for the board is, do we have a motion to authorize on behalf of the Historic Preservation Board, the chair of the Historic Preservation Board, to sign this settlement agreement, which has been brought to us by the Village of Pittsburgh's Board of Trustees?
Yes, I make the motion.
The agreement is being modified, so they can't currently sign the terms.
Okay.
But that doesn't preclude you from authorizing.
Yeah, we haven't seen the agreement.
Yeah, we haven't seen the agreement. That's in the package.
What's the, what's the modification?
It's who's responsible. What we're talking about.
It's a one-line modification that would say that the Village Board of Trustees, not the building inspector, would endorse the selected inspector. It doesn't have anything to do with this board's purview and it's no.
So.
On the bearing of the agreement.
May I ask a question?
Not really. So you can make your motion allowing the chair to sign it either this version or a version which contains a change from the building inspector approving the inspector for the project to the board of trustees approving the inspector for the project.
When's this new settlement agreement going to be finished? Like, this change that's been made, when, when is that change made and when will the new draft be ready for review? With like, with final verbiage?
It'll be probably right as people are signing it. It's gone back and forth for probably 15 different versions and we hammered out a agreed settlement and this came up on Friday. We, as soon as we got it, of course, that's fine, that's a fine revision made. So Stan Spencer, the village attorney on this matter, I'm sure will have someone in his office type that in.
Yeah, you can, I mean, you can do it that way.
Okay.
You can do it with, as you can, author of the sign in its present form or a form which includes the switch from the building inspector to the board of trustees approving the inspector.
And you're okay with that?
I would prefer to sign the final, final approved version.
That's where I am.
Yeah, so the Historic Preservation Board will sign the, the final version. I think any further unnecessary delay would be unfair to the application.
At this point, Christian, the, the whole agreement won't be signed until the change is made, so when they sign it today, the whole agreement will not change.
Wait, wait, oh, my understanding was.
We're not signing it today.
The, the Historic Preservation Board isn't signing any of it today.
Correct.
So when, when, when it's a final version and, and is to be approved and signed, then they, they will sign.
Right.
Right, but my motion was to sign this settlement agreement, of which has been brought to us by the Village of Pittsburgh Board of Trustees in this.
It's actually for us to authorize you, so they, to sign it.
Correct.
So he's not signing anything tonight.
No, it's just you guys.
So people are authorized to sign the settlement agreement that you, that you. We have to, we have to, we have to.
So you make that motion in the alternative, either this form?
Okay.
Or the sole change being the change from the building inspector to the board of trustees selecting or, I'm sorry, approving the proposed inspector for the project.
Okay. Okay, so do we have a motion to authorize on behalf of the present Historic Preservation Board, the chair of the Historic Preservation Board, to sign this settlement agreement or a sole change from the building inspector or the board of trustees selecting and approving the inspector for the project at 75th and Row?
Not selecting, just approving.
Not selecting, just approving. Alexandria, you'll have to take that out.
All right, I'll get it.
Did you get that?
Yes, I did, and the computer did. Do you have a second?
One second.
Member Dubraski?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Lannahan? Member Zara?
No vote.
Jared Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you all very much.
For separate, independent inspector for, for building code issues?
I see you've got a three-word time.
I didn't want to say no to you, that's what I wanted. Have you interject there, so.
No, no, well, it was a point of understanding for discussion, not participating in the discussion.
No, but you can't, you can't participate.
Okay, that's fine, yeah.
Is there a statute of limitations on?
Good luck with that.
You're not accused, you cannot, I just.
Okay. Is there, is there a statute?
Hard to stay a see-through. Go ahead.
All right, we'll go to Five West Jefferson for fencing.
Steve, give West Jefferson something about that one. She should have interested me by.
Brenda LeWilton?
Yeah, she has.
That's her response?
Yeah.
All right, we'll just go on to 39 South Main Street for the window signage.
Could I make a comment about Five West Jefferson before we move on?
They're not here, can we?
Um, applicants, we're seeing if we can get a hold of the applicant so they can discuss their application with them.
Okay, well, I just wanted to inform the board that I had notified Alexandria that, in my opinion, there's insufficient information on this.
Okay.
Do you have the original?
Specific.
No, it wasn't the origination, just printing it on a level.
We have the style, we have the sign, what else do you need?
There are no dimensions on anything. This is compared to fence applications that we have reviewed in the past, the amount of information about the materials is insufficient. If you want to vote on it, it's up to you, but I'm not voting on this.
All right, let's start with 39 South Main Street, thanks for coming.
Hi.
All right. So tell us about your business, tell us why you're here, what you're looking to do.
Um, it's a small, um, so I gave two options of a sign just because it does have to look to itself and people will be disturbing from here down.
Okay.
So that's why I kind of put the middle cross on it and I did see a couple of the other businesses even here on the backside, I wasn't sure what president's going, so that would be my first option, just to have a little bit more time to see what I understand.
Wait, we have one quick question. I don't think we have two signs.
I think that's the opaque.
The opaque one.
This one's opaque?
Yeah.
Yeah, I think that's actually, I don't think it's just meant to.
Okay.
I think it's meant to actually place the window.
I do want to keep it on.
No, 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 that's, yeah, no, okay.
Yeah, I think the building inspector has indicated the statue is now, the opaque one is now, so.
Yeah.
But that would be okay with like an internal curtain or something?
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what we, like a little shape, I just figured I would ask.
Yeah.
So two points, at least in our, our code, that I don't know how the board feels about it, but specifically, it, it strikes me as too large for two reasons. One is that our guidelines say that if it is printed on the window, it shouldn't be more than 20% of the window. Now, are we talking about the actual area that it covers or the actual logo itself?
Right.
I think that's a good discussion for us, but second. Well, what's, what is a decision of 20%?
That, that is not a discussion for you, that's a decision for the building inspector, because if it needed, if it's, if you determine it's more than 25%, they'd need a variance from those.
But is it, is it, is there a definition though of what the 20%? Okay.
Dimensions or volume?
Yeah.
That's it, because the volume wise, it's not.
Had it pulled up here, so. I don't know if on ours it actually says. Yeah, so the way that, to move off of Chris is, the way that I read this also was that it was a seven and a half foot wide by six and a half foot tall, so that's 47 and a quarter square feet. And in our, our maximum lar, uh, maximum square footage is 30 square feet. So that, that, that was my main thing about the size of this on the window.
Yeah, and particularly not meant for, meant for pedestrian, not.
Right.
Car traffic.
Exactly.
Just specifies nowhere between 20% of the storefront window, but again, by size or by volume. Because the signage itself is quite thin.
It's unfortunate we don't have any of that information, what Steve's determination was on the, on the application form.
Wouldn't be here if it needed.
Okay, all I'm saying is that there's no, there's no signature by the code enforcement official and there's no checkmark that it meets our, our sign ordinance.
Well, even if it was vague by the 20% standard, it's still very clear, at least too large from like a pedestrian perspective and, as you pointed out, the volume or the square footage perspective. Although I did pull up on Google Maps and that tree is really annoying and I appreciate that you want your signage in the window.
Yeah, it's right there.
Yeah.
Are, are the muntens in the window, you know, the divider bars, those are called muntens, are those?
They're sandwiched in between the veins.
They're in, in between two panes of glass?
Yes.
Okay. That makes putting the sign on a heck of a lot easier.
Well, also make a decision to go outside or inside because it looked really funny.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
And I didn't want it to look different from the window to the other side of the building.
Well, I find the design of the sign to be in, in appealing for me because it isn't obscuring all the place. My only, my only comment is that your phone, the letters, the numbers seem really large in comparison to the other type, which I understand why, but proportionally.
It would, it would, the sign would actually be better without the phone number, like this one right here, if this was another option.
Okay.
It would be, you know, a little bit better. Yeah, to have no phone number or, or under the established 2024 right there, in the same exact font and size.
Okay.
But not the, right across the bottom.
Okay.
I agree with Jenny, I, I actually think aesthetically, it's, it's a lovely sign and it's not overpowering and I think the, the intent of the values that we have is that we don't have the massive blaring, you know, ugly signs, so.
Well, pass that along to the designer.
Yeah, from a logo perspective, I think it's fine, I think personally, I would just like to see it occupy less of the.
Okay.
All right, so let's work towards a motion. And maybe not work towards a motion, but we should define a few things. So we have a logo sign, are we taking this as the entire window is the sign or in, in towards the 20% or is this a 20% volume coverage?
Which one are you going to have, the white one or just the leather?
Just leather.
No, we've already disregarded the white one.
Leather, it was very hard to determine.
Of course.
20% of the lathering, so I think if you chop down the, the phone number or remove it, that would satisfy, make sure it's under the 20%.
Well, we're not taking it as the window size becoming the entire square footage of the sign.
Right.
Which would be seven and a half by six and a half.
To compare it to 20%.
I think what Dan's trying to say is that if this was on, if this was a fixed to the side of a building.
Are we taking this as a 47 square foot sign?
I, that's not the way I look at it, here's the lathering is stuff, it's not like you're placing a rectangle sign with all those lettering, you are simply putting the, the applique on the window, so it's the physical application that I would consider the measuring, not as if.
Okay.
Because if you.
The volume of that.
It would not, it would be way over 20%.
Okay. So we're, we're gonna, we're gonna make this that the, the window is not the entire sign, it's just the logo is the sign.
Correct.
Okay, so then the square footage of the, or we should really use circumference, but the circumference of this needs to be less than 30 square feet on the window.
No.
This, this is the sign.
The amount of the window, no, it's not, the amount of the window.
This, that's the sign.
The amount of the window that is covered is the measure of coverage, not.
No, but we have to take this as a, when we have to take this as square footage or no?
I still, I still think that the better rule to follow would be the pedestrian versus, like, we don't need to quantify it to how much percent of the window it is, it's still overly large for a pedestrian sign.
Right.
So I think the question is how, how, how large is too large, how large is for automobiles, how large is for pedestrian?
Signs are not determined, sign sizes are not determined by whether it's a pedestrian or a car, the ordinance has, has specific percentage requirements.
I think in all the building, or the design guidelines say though, it should be sized to the pedestrian, not to the automobile.
Right, and I think that those values are 30 square feet max, but also one square foot per linear foot of the building frontage.
No, it's, no.
That, no, I'm not saying that we're using that, I'm just saying that's how you would define it as pedestrian versus.
The only, the only thing you have to consider is that physical window, 20% of that window can be covered, period, period, not as if it's a different whole sign, it's does that lathering cover more than 20, the lathering itself, period.
Okay.
Does it cover more than 20% of window and no, it does not.
I, I support that interpretation.
I do too.
Because it's not, it's not, it's not blocking the whole window.
Well.
Because there's still vision through there.
Right.
What matters is what the code enforcement officer has interpreted. That's where it matters.
So then to that end, which, what are we proving if not the size and design standards?
Placement.
Okay.
Placement, period.
Yeah, the type of tree would be, if you all, all that, that applique and you put it in one wall, wouldn't be over 20%.
I don't think so, no.
No, so it's legal by default.
So if we're only, if we're only moving on appropriateness and, and design?
Okay, yeah, and location.
Location, then none of that matters, that's not what we're moving on.
Yeah, you don't make the judgment call whether or not it needs a variance.
Do you have the dimension of the top to bottom and left to right of the actual sign, not the window opening? I know in the, I know in the packet, we have.
That was actually.
The affected elevations is at 7.5 by 6.3.
You mean like from how far it comes on the panes?
Basically like, no, like this, this measurement, like from right here.
Our sign, I actually.
To right there.
Do that, I don't have that much software to actually.
Yeah.
Yeah, Dan, you're certainly the white one, correct.
No, I'm not, I'm only using this one because I started drawing on it, this one. It's easier to show what I was looking for on the white.
But he's, he's considering all of the negative space that is glass.
Correct.
In a sign.
Correct. And in that view, I believe that this is, is still too large. I have nothing with the actual sign and obviously, other than the phone number, but I just don't want it to be too overbearing, it obviously needs to be noticeable, but if you look at the Alpha right next to it, it's much smaller and all the other signs are much smaller. If we approve something that's this large in scale, I would see a lot of people moving towards window signage.
Oh, I appreciate that, the Alpha windows are a quarter of the size of that one.
Yeah.
So when I was given what I was supposed to do, that's what I followed.
Okay.
Yeah. I mean, I'm open to having, reducing it if it makes me feel comfortable.
Yeah, it's generally my, like, like a third, so like that's a reasonable reduction of space.
Yeah.
Just like, so it's not, it's like being hypothetical, it's not going to be a specific measurement. But I mean, right, but I mean, it's occupying like almost everything. Which makes it feel like the entire window is a sign.
Yeah.
And I want it to be a window.
I think a third is, is a lot.
I think, yeah, I think up to a third, like 20, I was thinking like 20 to a, to 33% less. It's hard to visualize without like knowing what that is, but.
I'm just, I'm just trying to determine if we can. Can we?
Yeah, work a motion based on.
Well, I'm just trying to decide if we say that it basically has to fit within the, yeah, within a specific number of lights. Like, fit within the middle six panes.
No, that's too, that's way too small.
I think that's too small.
That's way too small, but if like the top arch was instead of the top third and the bottom third of the top panes, like if it was on the bottom third and, you know what I mean?
There should be more room, there should be more void space on the bottom than on the top. It's a.
Fibonacci design.
No.
How is that for pedestrians, when they're looking up and they're not?
Yeah.
You know what I mean, like when I ask my six foot four husband to hang a picture, I have to be like, it's not your, not everyone's your height.
I bet if you weren't moving on the window, it would be light only right above the glass, which would be for still pedestrians.
My, my point was that there's a, if you're framing a, a painting, for instance, or, or matting a watercolor, you want the sides and the top to be equal, but the bottom should be a little larger because your eye perceives that, if it's the same size, same reveal on all four sides, your eye perceives that bottom as being smaller, so that if, I don't think it should be more than, you know, 20% smaller seems like a lot to me, but also the placement on the, on the window, if it is now, there's more void space on the bottom than at the top and that's important to me.
What if we remove the, like, large phone number on the bottom of the sign?
Yeah, we, it still looks like. Yeah, we, it still looks like it on this one right here.
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe even like 10% of that phone number.
I, I, I would not be in support of having the phone number in, on a phone. Well, I don't know if there are any other signs in the village that have phone numbers, but if she, if she needs a phone number, I have no objection to it, but it's, it's too big. And this was suggested earlier, maybe next to or below the established text. But I think 25 or 30% is, is too small.
There are some that are just something.
Pardon me?
There are some that are just phone number something, or signs that we know have phone numbers.
Yeah, I mean, the copy matters, like whatever you want on your sign. It's just actually like location of it, I think is problematic.
Alright, so let's work towards a motion. How do we want to, how do we want to present the motion?
Personally, I think it would be hard to, to react to a theoretical reduction in size.
I'd be, I'd be open to a special meeting if you're able to get like a mop up of like.
I would be too.
A little bit smaller, but to what degree? Because I, I think I need to see it.
If you could give her some guidance about what you're shooting for.
Yeah.
So, reworking the phone number, inclusive or not, well, just like, I think it adds to this overall volume signage. So, if it was reworked in a way, but I think, I don't know, 10-ish percent smaller? Does that sound crazy?
Does anyone else have some guidelines anywhere, like bottom, panes?
Locationally, I, I think as long as it's like visual appealing, I think it's just still so massive.
Well, that's very subjective though.
Oh, yeah, I hear.
Feeling is very subjective, so I want to be able to tell my guys so we can do it and get it to you guys, so we can get that out there.
Well, I know.
Go ahead, sorry.
There, there's. This, this window is, is seven by four, seven panes by four. And currently, the coven is taking up five of the seven. So, what if the, what if this is reduced by the width of of one pane, so that it's like, it's like one and a half and one and a half.
Four but recentered. That's what you would really be saying. It would be four panes, but obviously recentered on the window.
Four panes but recentered.
If we're gonna reduce the size because typically the actual lettering doesn't take up this 20% of the window, is there a way of putting the milk, the milk like transparency behind those smaller chives?
That would then, yeah, that would then require variance, because that would still be more than probably 20%.
So, once you put some opaque thing, then we actually have to take the whole measurement, because then it becomes a larger percent. See, it's a small percent because you can still see through it. Once you can't see through it anymore, then it becomes a really big percent.
I just figured, you know, it's hard to ask.
I don't.
I feel like it is on taking, that's why we did it this way, because like Steve was saying, if you took all of that and added all up, it doesn't take up the 20% about what I was instructed to do.
I'll make a motion to approve the sign, just so we can get somewhere on this.
I like this, yep.
With the modification that the diameter of the sign be reduced from the horizontal, five, horizontal pane dimensions from five to four, which is a reduction of, I don't know, it looks like eight or 10 inches maybe.
Okay.
Step.
I agree with that.
Anybody objected?
I, I would add in addition that we reduce, that you reduce the size of the phone number.
And perhaps put it inside the circle?
Uh, yeah.
I'm not picking about that. I just don't like those numbers.
Personally, I prefer that, but I don't think it's something that's my.
Yeah, I wouldn't require. I would just say, let's reduce those numbers. I guess.
We have to know, then we have to say how much we're gonna be reduced by.
Yeah, maybe 10% is fine.
I think the phone number proportionate with your second font size.
Skill, station, no?
Yeah. Like even if it was like between those two, like with your phone number, then the established.
Okay.
Purely opinion that doesn't have anything to do with my vote.
Yeah.
Go ahead.
Well, I'm trying to say, I don't think that that is something that I should be voting on, but if you're looking for design perspective, because if, if, if you reduced it and that was inside the reduction that we were just asking for, I think even where it was, I don't think it's my place to tell you where to put it.
Say that again?
Personally.
That's a whole other question.
Yeah, so, uh, I'm saying that like, from a design perspective, I don't think there's anything wrong with it. Um, from the perspective of Harvard, I don't think it's my place to vote on whether the inclusion of that exists or not. But if you are going back to your designer and you're looking for just a guidepost, that's what I would say. I think it looks appropriate.
Just put the phone number where the established.
Right, but you could still say, Chris, I disagree with you and I'm gonna put it down bottom anyway. And I don't think I'm gonna change my vote because of that.
Right, but.
Currently, the height of.
I can't speak for them, but that's how I would vote.
Currently, the height of the numbers and the phone number is almost the same size, same height as the text in coven. So, you know, maybe half, half the height of the coven text.
Personally, my objection is on your overall size, not the.
That's mine too.
That's it. That's all. I was like, I'm not, I'm not, you're gonna dictate how you design your logo. That's your business.
Thank you. Is this a condition that you're putting in?
I'm yes.
Remember Sarah?
I'm not putting a condition at, at this point.
Okay.
It's been discussed. Is the feeling on the board that the digits are too tall?
Uh, it was my, my opinion or my feeling as well too. And at the beginning, we, I thought we were gonna remove that from the bottom.
Well, I mean, especially.
I was lightly remembering from the bottom.
Yeah.
And I remember established and just put the phone number, if you guys are fine with that. As long as they can see that, it's kind of looking in the butt, so go ahead and do your business. I'm not, we don't want to.
Call.
You know.
Yeah. Well, what about size then? Same size as the established?
Exactly.
Okay. Then that should be a, a condition as well, Alexandria, that the telephone number will be, the text of the telephone number will be the same text, uh, size and type as established 2024 and will be placed as you choose. Is that right with you?
Yep.
Okay.
I also just feel obliged to say that it doesn't, I don't think it has anything to do with your vote, but you should know that we are not a full board tonight and you are privileged to have a full board in front of you. So, if you decide to defer for us to vote, that is your right.
Honestly, if we're ready to improve it, I want to get any sign up.
And that's why we want to work towards.
Everybody in the gallery as well, I goes for you too. It's nothing against this.
Alright, I'll second Virginia's motion.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubraski?
Yes.
Sarah Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. Thanks for working through that.
We need some findings around reducing it past what's covenable.
Reducing it past what's covenable?
Yeah, we made a reduction in what she's allowed to have for some of the people. So, we invited her on.
It wasn't ever said that it was overfull, it's 20%, and Steve said it was under 20%.
So, but she's allowed to have 20%.
Right.
But there was no math to us to show.
Less than she wants to have. So.
That was motion wasn't made based on a percentage of the window being taken up, that it had to be smaller. It was more a design and location of the sign that needed to be smaller.
Right.
It's aesthetic, it's not.
Not percentage of.
Right, that's what I'm at, but there has to be, we have to be finding around why you may reduce the size. I mean, I'm not, I mean, I'm not trying to be the logicist, you know, why did you reduce the size? And that's fine, you know, like.
You can work on the standings.
It's not, it's not, it's not appropriate for the sign that it sets to be as large as it is. It's more in line with the design standards.
So, yeah, so the sign that was approved is more in line with the design standards in the reduction of size. It is also, um, what else we wanted to say about the sizing for that?
More consistent and existing signage on the street.
Thank you. Alright, 42 Monroe Ave, Kitchen and, Kitchen Edition and renovation.
Hello, Dan?
Hello.
How you guys doing? So, you guys did an addition.
We didn't do it.
Oh, you didn't do it?
We're here to get.
Because I remember you guys came, what, like two years ago?
We made, we made some slight changes to make it a little smaller.
Oh, okay.
And that's our back, our approvals lapse. So, here we are.
Nice.
So, the, the big things the last time were making sure the windows and doors were wood, which we did not change. Um, you can see even less from the road than before, because we took off the second story. So, really, the only thing that changed was, was the roof line. And I think that was the, the only other thing you guys mentioned last time is just making sure the lights weren't shining towards Monroe Avenue, which they're not. They're all facing towards the back. So, the big change last time was roof line and no second story.
This is coming out of New Energy Works, so is it timber framed inside? Okay, just, just wondering. You do great work.
Yeah, I guess those changes address anything I'd be having questions on, so thank you. Just like changed your mind again, like a.
This is a whole rethought sort of come down a little bit too.
Yeah, well.
That was a main goal.
Yeah.
That doesn't happen.
No.
I didn't have any initial questions on this.
Yeah, me neither.
Unless there's anything we want to discuss and bring up between anybody else on the board, but I didn't have anything else.
All same, everything else.
Everything's all matching, existing. And we had that discussion too on the stucco, remember that?
Yeah. Motion to accept the application as presented.
Second.
Well, wait, Virginia, do you have any questions?
No, I don't.
Okay.
I thought I saw you shake your hand.
Thank you. I didn't, I didn't hear anything first I wanted to.
No, I'm just.
Hi, Matt Torres.
Hi.
Member Dubraski?
Hi.
Member Sarah?
Hi.
Sarah Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I was in this house one time years ago. It was on a tour. And at the time, I think it was owned by the Williamson's. Is that a, a name that you've seen on the deed at all?
It was, I think there was maybe, maybe the seventies.
Yes, that, it would have been a little later than that, but I walked in the door and there was this flocked red wallpaper. I just went, that's gone. Good. Well, I, I guessed it would probably be a lot different because the person who owned it then was even older than I am. I'm sure she's dead by now, but it was, even then, it was pretty horrifying.
I heard flocked wallpapers coming back.
Oh.
Thank you, sorry.
Oh, man, okay.
Do you remember?
Well, I was motioning.
Jess, is this the last COA with a new date since it's all changes or a new COA?
No, it should be a new COA because there were changes.
There were changes.
Okay, we'll go back to Five West Jefferson fence.
Hi, hi, I'm Brenda.
Hi, Brenda.
Hi, Brenda, how are you?
Good. How's it going in New York?
Well, glad you made it.
I think it was the 18th, I'm only behind.
So, tell us what you're doing and what you're here for.
Yeah, so I bought Five West Jefferson much and a half years ago and there was just a random section of ice in the middle of the yard. Um, you can see this in full photo.
That was there when you bought it?
It was there when I bought it. Apparently, it's been there, I think, over 20 years, just that one section.
Wow.
And it's on your neighbor's lot?
Um, it is, which is really strange because the good side faces him. So, according to the survey, I always thought it was my section. Um, so I got over when I wanted to do this and talked to him. And so, he said it was there like that when he bought the property. Um, but it's actually my fence on his lot. So, I think it's about like six inches on his. So, I told him what I wanted to do and I asked him how, you know, how would you feel about whether I remove the section, move it back, or just put a new section. So, if he wanted me as well to kind of pick up that section. It's old, I wouldn't use it. I would just replace it. And I would go with something a little bit nicer looking, um, the shadow box fence. And I painted the diagram there.
So, to be clear, then that's gonna be demolished and then just the, the rest of the fence just continue along the same.
Correct. Yeah, so it was from the corner of the back of my house to, um, to the very edge of my property back.
And you'll have the surveyor mark the line, the property line?
Um, so, um, we could, I could, I guess, um, the neighbor said that there is like a pin in the back of the property. It's on there too, so, um, I tried to call the guy who did the survey from two and a half years ago. I put like 10 phone calls. I cannot get a hold of him. So, we had to find a new survey.
On your instrument survey map, are there dimensions between your house, like, is that a garage, the barn at the back and the fence?
Um.
That's the neighbor's barn.
Oh, this is the neighbor's barn.
That's the neighbor's barn, yeah. So, mine is, um, it's a garage.
This garage.
Well, your, your instrument survey map should show the fence on the other property.
It does. Yeah, it does on there. Yeah, um, it's just very red. Yeah, it's ten inches on there. Yeah, it's like, yeah.
Yeah, you can see that on the one floor.
Two inches or three inches on the, on the top.
I just have to tell you, I absolutely love your shutters.
Oh, thank you.
They're so, they're just like, just perfect.
Do you know the story behind those or?
I don't, um, I don't, but I have the rest of my drawers, like apparently like all the windows had those shutters, so I have the rest of them. I would love to put them up.
Yeah.
I think you ask yourself the same thing every time you just pass.
Well, I sit there waiting for light, like every day I'm coming up.
They're, they're half, they're old, they're original.
Uh, not that it affects the application at all, but just out of curiosity, the, um, the example that you shared has a, uh, it's an arched shadow box. Is that your intention as well?
It is. I think it has a nice look to it. It's an elevated look to that.
The opposite of what you currently have. Isn't that a, yeah, concave? Yep.
Yeah, you, or currently it goes like this.
Oh, it adds a little extra character.
So, um, and you, you don't have actual dimensions on the, on the map, do you? But you have on here that you have basically eight foot panels. And I'm assuming that's two eight foot panels that will replace the old one. And then, I mean, is that, is that gonna be it?
Yeah, so it would be actually so.
Six, eight foot panels?
Um, so it would be, no, so I think that it kind of just, I don't know.
Yeah, sure.
Sorry to explain. So, each one is one section. So, it would be, right, so two sections would get replaced. So, it would be one, two, three, four, five, six panels.
And it's just purely for privacy? So, you're not like explicitly going to your, your property line or anything like that?
Yeah, it's purely privacy.
In other words, they're not going to reduce the size of the sections for, uh, you know, aesthetic reasons to complete a fence line? They're just gonna put those, those six sections in and that's it?
Yes.
Okay. And it's not gonna touch the corner of your house?
Looks like it's got plenty of space.
So, I was gonna, well, how do you want it to be?
Well, that's up to you, but if, what we would want is to know how it's gonna look on this highlighted yellow line and, and where it's gonna stop. And if it's just six times eight, it's 48. So, if it's just a 48 foot fence line, that's fine. But then, if you're gonna end it at the corner of the house, you know, then we would just, I would just make a note right here and just.
I was just kind of envisioning. So, Empire Fatsing is going to do it. I've reached out to a lot of the ones in the village. I was kind of envisioning it to kind of maybe come out like maybe like an inch, just off and then, so kind of like maybe an inch or two off and then.
Oh, so like off your house?
It won't touch the house.
So, well, I was gonna have it, I was thinking it was gonna attach. I mean, I'm very open to however it should be.
There's no need for it to be attached. I mean, you could have the post flush.
Just, okay, flush.
Honestly, whoever's installing it is gonna kind of just take their.
Just, I want to think about a practical matter. If you want to be able to go. Just, I'm gonna think about a practical matter, if you wanna be able to go around your house. If you don't have a gate there.
Yeah, do you ever go right near?
You're gonna have to walk all the way around that fence.
So there is like that little black metal fence that was in there as well. And it does have a little gate on it.
But isn't that gonna be removed?
So it is gonna be removed. I, so I could, I could put a gate in, I wasn't thinking of really doing that.
Or you could.
The gate is like having it all aligned a little bit more seated.
Yeah, and the back, because the back, the, those sections would have been all the way to the back.
I don't think you'd have room for a gate either.
I, I would leave a little space if it was me, you know, to be, so I don't have to walk all the way around if I wanna go around. Or, you know, if you wanna have a hose or something go through there or whatever.
Yeah, but i- in other words, if you, if you don't access that side of your house all at all, then probably there's no point, but if you're like walking around or
Yeah, I.
accessing the home parts of your side yard, then it might be something you wanna consider.
Okay, so I think with the, um, sections in my diagram, it was definitely enough for me to shoot around and like has to go around there.
You have to mow the grass on the other side, but it's not, it's not, not on the lot line.
It's like not even like 10 inches yet. He kind of gets upset when it gets a little bit more on his property. So I just kind of just let it go.
Just let him mow your lawn.
Yeah.
Yeah, so you take care of it.
You, you do that.
So just to, you know, the one thing that strikes me though is that your house is not square to your property line. So you are keeping it square to the property line, not to the house.
So it does, because the lot line is more angled, it tapers into the back, so it would follow, it would.
It would follow the property line.
It would follow the property line, but a little bit more on mine, so I don't interfere with his line at all. If that makes sense, so I wouldn't go straight, I would keep it tapered.
Yeah, which honestly does, has nothing to do with our approval or not, but, okay. I motion to accept the application as presented.
I second. I'm seconding all the time.
That's worked. Somebody's gonna do it.
And Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubraski?
Yes.
Member Sarah?
I'm going to abstain, there's insufficient material, information on the material dimensions on this fence relative to what's required by the, by our ordinance. I don't object to the fence. There's just not, we need to be consistent on what we look at and how we evaluate it. And typically, we would have post dimension size, which I see is there, but also, uh, height on the, on the, uh, on the arch, uh,
I assume so.
Dimensions, uh, no, don't, don't, you don't have to tell me because there's gonna be a vote and I'm, I'm confident your fence will be approved. This is for the other board members and the building inspector. Because typically, uh, there are dimensions required for the boards, thickness, width, all those kinds of things. It's not present on this application and I will not vote on it until the application. So I abstain.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
I know you wanted to bring that up at the beginning of the meeting, but I wanted to get going because I.
No, I got it.
But if you wanted to bring that up, we could have worked it into the motion too.
Well.
I understand we're coming to.
I had already notified the office that there was insufficient information in the CD application in any case, so. I'm, I'm not gonna beat my head against the wall.
No, that's, okay. All right, so let's do minutes. We have Thursday, May 16th. We have Tuesday, June 4th. And then we also have July 15th, so we have three meetings.
Okay, so we can, we can do sixteen?
So we'll go one by one, let's go one by one, starting with Thursday, May 16th. Go ahead.
There's four.
Oh my gosh. All right.
I'm sorry, what did you say?
There's four. There's four, seven minutes, but they're in order if you just wanna go.
Yeah, I, I have no changes to, to make to the May 16th.
Hey, did they start working on five, uh, 59 State Street, the retaining wall?
I haven't noticed it, no. I was there a week or two ago.
The ice cream thing at the five one?
Nothing against them, but. Yeah, I, I don't see anything with the 16th that I object to and I would motion to accept the minutes from 16th.
I'll second the motion.
Uh, Member Torres?
Hi.
Member Dubraski?
Hi.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we'll review Tuesday, June 4th. That was my mistake, that I didn't add that one in. Tuesday, June 4th. Uh, this one was.
This is the onsite?
Yep.
Yeah, so we visited it, we didn't vote on anything.
Yep. And it was just the three of us, so it should just be the three. I'll second that.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Torres?
I was, I wasn't there, yeah, I was.
Member Dubraski?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, now June 17th. This is when we voted on it. Shutters.
Has nothing to do with this, but what the shutter dogs did you end up approving? What did they look like?
They are long, then hooks.
Yeah. I share with Dan, I was in Charles City and I was on a walking door and I took a bunch of pictures of all these different ornate shutter dogs as a result of it. Because I was just like, that's so cool.
Oh, yeah, they're really cool.
I would have never have noticed them.
I don't have any.
We must not watch home shows, our patients with this. They put shutters, shutter dogs on all the time.
I'll make a motion to approve these. Monday.
Yeah, newcomers. And she hasn't started yet either. Uh, I'll second the motion.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Dubraski?
Yes.
Member Torres?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, then the last one we have is July 15th. And, uh, Chris, you're out. At least maybe. For the shutters. Oh.
What, what came out of the, uh, discussion about the signs? Do you remember the, the application?
Which one? Which, where is it?
Uh, 19 State Street. It's on the, the second page of July 15th.
Uh, this is the one here, they actually, the, the sign was big.
Right, yeah.
We, it's, it was within the statute, so.
Well, it had to do with two, two signs and I'm gonna be.
No, there was a recommendation that we revisit the statute because it's worded poorly.
And the trustees have not said?
No, and I, that's my fault, I didn't.
No, 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 it was, the, the liaison always watches this meeting and she reports to the trustees.
So we, we acted on the best, best information at the time.
Yep. And it should, it should be a grouping. Or it's awkward because then you would have to go back and tell the first sign that they would have to get a new sign.
Money to do something different.
But that is the right thing to do because you can look at the front of that building and how large it is. They could put six different companies in there. They do it one by one by one, we can't just keep it giving each company, uh, or business.
They're directory signs.
It then becomes a grouping and it becomes a directory sign, but.
Right, two is not a grouping.
Yeah.
Is there, is that the interpretation?
The interpretation, um, was that the wording as presented, each business has full right to the square, linear square foot of the big, front of the building.
Yeah, that's. But it's captured here, so I make a motion that we approve the minutes as they are written.
I'll second. Member Torres?
Yes.
Member Dubraski?
Abstain.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Chair Olson?
Yes.
Motion passes.
All right, we need to do findings and facts on that fence. Forgot to do that.
Findings and facts, uh, it is consistent with our design guidelines. It does not affect the historic resource, is replaceable.
Thank you.
And six feet, it's.
Within the code.
Within the code.
Wait, so nine to 11 nor, wait, sorry. Motion closing.
Second.
Member Sarah?
Yes.
Member Torres?